It being past the hour of seven o'clock on March 18th, 2013, I call this town meeting to order. The first item is that the Board of Registros' quorum certification. And this is to certify that in accordance with Section 172-4 of the Code of North Reading, the quorum of 150 voters required to call a special town meeting is present. Another order of business is we need to elect an assistant moderator as we have folks down in the gymnasium. I would ask for a vote to elect Ed McGrath as the assistant moderator for the gymnasium. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Like me, had no one want your job either. Could I please have a vote from the gymnasium?
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Unanimous vote. If Mr. McGrath will please come to the stage to be sworn in. We'll give Mr. McGrath a couple of minutes to head down to the gymnasium. In the meantime, a couple of orders of business for both the main hall and for the gymnasium. I would please ask you to shut off your cellphones. I would remind everyone that there's a five-minute time limit for speaking. And anybody wishing to go over the five-minute time limit needs to ask for a leave of the meeting. All registered voters should be wearing a yellow ribbon. All visitors will be wearing a black ribbon. I would also ask that no personal attacks be made and that we all speak to the motion that's on the floor. In the main hall, the tellers for counting. To my right, Lori Capazudo. For the center section, Paul Bailey. And for the front, in my left, Mr. Brad Jones, Sr. Mr. McGrath, are you in the gymnasium?
Yes, he is.
Oh, you won't let him speak, count? Mr. McGrath, if you would take a moment to appoint some tellers in the event we need to count in the gymnasium, and then let me know their names, please. Mr. Moderator? Yes, Mr. McGrath?
I have appointed Tim Conroy, C-O-N-R-Y, and Walter Koh, K-O-H, as our counters in the gym.
Walter Koh, K-O-H. Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Mr. Delaney, we have a motion to admit visitors.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following persons can be admitted to the meeting. Brad Valian, County Administrator; Darren Clowning, Town Council; Robert Terrose, transcript, Freedom of the Floor; Carol Deucro, Town Clerk Staff; John Bernard, North Reading High School Principal; Kathleen Willis, North Reading Superintendent of Schools; Wayne Hyer, North Reading Public Schools; Joanna Criff, Gilbane Building Company; Michael Kennedy, Vice President, Gilbane Company; James Driscoll, Gilbane Company; A.J. Lee Parry, Assistant Principal, North Reading High School; Jeffrey Wettke, OPM, PMA, Middle School, High School Project; Phil Healy, NORCIM, Freedom of the Floor; Chris McNeil, NORCIM, Freedom of the Floor; Rob Cabon, NORCIM, Freedom of the Floor; Jason Smith, NORCIM, Freedom of the Floor; Maureen Stevens, Park and Rec Operations Director; Halina Minton, Library; Eugene Torrick, Town Hall IT; Robert Jewslaw, Dora Whittier, Architects; Gary McIntyre, Two Ryan's Way, Tootsburg, Custodian; Martin Fear, Health Department; Patrick Dealey, North Reading Public Schools; Debbie Cabon, Sessions Office; Susan Magna, Veterans Department; Marion McKay, Treasury Collector; Allison Olson, Human Resource Administrator; Brad Door, Dora Whittier, Architect; Ashley Troutman, Hatch, Freedom of the Floor; Bruce Tom, State Senator. Richard... Apologize, can't make out the last name from a 11 Green Street.
We have a motion to admit. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor in the main hall, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Unanimous in the main hall. Mr. McGrath, would you please take a vote in the gymnasium?
All those in favor for admitting, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. We have a... I would now ask the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Delaney, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Thank you for coming this evening.
We have a motion to dispense with the reading of the war. Mr. Messeri.
Mr. Moderator, I move to dispense with the reading of the war and to refer to the act as by number, and further to dispense with the reading of the return of service by the constable.
We have a motion to dispense with the reading of the war. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Unanimous in the main hall. Mr. McGrath, if you would take a vote in the gymnasium.
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Article One, Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, Article One, High School, Middle School Project Supplemental Funding. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $15,500,000 for the purpose of paying additional cost of an addition and renovation of the middle school and construction of a new high school. Create a new, integrated middle high school located at Park Street and Sherman Road, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. The project, for which school facility project the town initially appropriated the sum of $107,728,000 under Article One of the March 19th, 2012 Special Town Meeting, in which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of school children for at least 50 years, and for which the town may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, said amount to be expended under the direction of the Secondary Schools Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under Chapter 44 of General Laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town acknowledges the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitled discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. In any project cost the town incurs in excess of any grant approved and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town, provided further that any grant that the town may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 1, 51.49% of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or 2, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided further that any appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of principal and interest on said borrowing from the limitations on total taxes imposed by Chapter 59, Section 21(c) of the General Laws, Proposition Two and a Half, in that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town and MSBA.
We have the motion. Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation or presentation first?
Board of Selectmen would like to reserve their recommendation and their presentation until the conclusion of the Secondary School Building Committee presentation.
Mr. Burke?
If you'd like to come down to the front. And all speakers must state their name and address for the record.
My name is David Burke, 11 Palmeroy Road in North Reading. The reason for my point of order is that I am going to request, and my understanding is that at least 25 voters have to stand in agreement, I'm going to request a secret written ballot for this vote. The reason that I'm doing that is that no matter how this evening goes, there's been a lot of disunity in the town, and I think it's extremely important that, no matter what side of the issue you're on, that everyone stand in agreement to have a written ballot so that every voter will feel that they've had a chance to vote, they haven't any reason to feel intimidated, and that their vote will be counted. I've checked with the Town Clerk's office, they're prepared to do the ballot. My estimate is it might take an hour. Assuming that we have a short presentation by the SSBC that the meeting agrees to, and perhaps a half an hour discussion, we already validate sometime around eight and concluding it sometime around nine. Now, it'll take longer to count the ballots, but those who need to leave will be assured that their votes have been made and will be counted. So I'm going to make the moderator aware that I intend to make such a request while I can make it now.
Mr. Burke, from the newspaper, I was aware you were going to make a recommendation that we go to a paper ballot, and the appropriate time to ask for the paper ballot is at the conclusion of debate when I call for a vote. If 25 other individuals stand, we will go to a paper ballot.
You assure me that I'll be recognized for that purpose?
If it's a point of order, yes. If you... Yes.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to address the main hall and the gymnasium because he said something that's very important. If we go to a paper ballot, that process will take a long time, which is fine, and we're prepared for that. Also, a comment that he made was that your vote will count, but not if you leave because the item could be reconsidered. So if the majority of people go home, so you drop your vote in the ballot and go home, if someone in the hall calls for reconsideration, that is, to put it back on the floor, and it's voted to be reconsidered, a vote can be taken again, and that could be by paper or by voice vote or by handbook. So I'll just alert everyone that no matter what the process is, until we adjourn, the matter is not closed. So a motion to reconsider can be made by somebody prior to the adjournment of the meeting. So I would caution you, if you're here on the issue, to stay through to the end.
Mr. Moderator, what's required for a motion to reconsider?
Under the town code and under Robert's Rules of Order, reconsideration is to put it back on the floor.
How many votes are required to do that?
Two-thirds.
It's a two-thirds. It's a two-thirds requirement.
All right. So we don't get two-thirds for the reconsideration and fail?
If we don't get two-thirds for a reconsideration, it fails. That's correct. But if people are here to have their voice heard and have their vote counted, and they go home, they could find that what they thought happened didn't happen. And that is my point. You can't know who went home and who didn't go home, in particular if it's with a paper ballot. So if you're here to vote and have your voice heard, regardless of whether it's a voice vote, a hand count, or a paper ballot, I would urge you to stay through to the adjournment of the meeting. Having said that, Mr. Delaney?
Checkmate.
Mr. Moderator, the Secondary School Building Committee requests 45 minutes leave of the meeting to give the complete presentation.
And I apologize. I apologize for this. Mr. McGrath, did anyone in the gymnasium have questions on the reconsideration?
Do they have any questions on the reconsideration? Understand that if you vote and leave and it's reconsidered, your vote, there's going to be another vote. Seems everyone understands in here, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Delaney has asked for a 45-minute leave for the meeting for purposes of a presentation. In the main hall, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? We're going to go to a hand count. Mr. McGrath, if you would go to a hand count in the gymnasium as well.
Okay.
Mr. Bailey?
Mrs. Capazudo?
Mr. Bailey? Mrs. Capazudo?
Mr. Moderator, sixty-nine.
Six-nine? Mr. McGrath, please notify me when you've got the count.
Mr. Moderator, the first vote was forty-six.
So forty-six, yes?
Yep. Yes, sir.
Okay. The motion failed. Two-fifty before three-oh-three again. Under the town code, which provides the five minutes. It's also run under Robert's Rules of Order. Under Robert's Rules of Order, an individual may yield their time. Ten members of the Secondary School Building Committee have yielded their time for the purposes of the presentation.
Yeah, well, my name is Jerry Venetia. I'm a member of the School Committee and the Secondary School Building Committee. I'm a little reluctant to give my address right now, but it's... It's nine Glen Drive, North Reading. Again, the purpose of tonight's presentation, and I want to thank the people for listening, but the purpose of tonight's presentation was to update the community on the secondary school building project, the new high school, middle school project. In addition to that, it was to come and ask you for your consideration in appropriating another $15.5 million to finish the project. I promise I'm going to move through my section of this very quickly, and I'm going to ask the other members that are presented to do the same thing, because obviously, the people have spoken, and I don't think you want to sit here too long before you vote. Joining me tonight in the presentation are Sean Delaney, who's the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and he's also a member of the Secondary School Building Committee; Bob Messeri, who's the Vice Chairman of the Board of Selectmen; Kathleen Willis, who's the Superintendent of Schools here in North Reading; John Bernard, who's the Principal of North Reading High School; and Kathleen O'Connell, who is the Principal at the North Reading Middle School. So I'm going to move through this quickly, and if you take a look up behind me, I'm just going to give you a little historic perspective to tell you how we got to where we are today. I'm just going to run through this quick, if you want to watch the slides behind me. Back in December of 2005, second...
The people in the audience voting not to hear a presentation is down by over 50%. I don't know the exact count. By some bias, I'm just wondering, by Robert's rules, does the school committee have the right to circumvent that vote, to re-class?
Mr. Moderator, this is the gym, we can't hear a thing from that person speaking.
On a point of order, I'd ask that you go to the microphone. You'd either have to come to the microphone down
overwhelmingly approved the appropriation of a hundred and seven million dollars, again, sixty million from the community, forty-nine million from the state, and at that point, the ball started rolling, we hired a contractor, and now the project is underway. At this point, I'm going to yield. I hope I didn't use more than five minutes, and I thank you for your consideration while I was speaking. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Willis, superintendent of schools here in North Reading, and I'm just going to give you a quick review of the current site plan that we have for this project. You can see on the right-hand side of the slide, the existing athletic fields. If you move beyond those, you can see the proposed playing fields. That's where the high school currently sits. If you continue to move toward the left side, you'll see the new facility. The middle school is still where it currently sits, and in between the academic wing of the high school, and I'm just going to point to that, and the middle school, you'll see the shared core facilities, and behind that is the parking spaces that have been allocated. What I'd like to review with you now, very quickly, is the phasing plan that's currently in place. Based on additional approved funding from December two thousand and twelve until September of two thousand and fourteen, these things will take place. Build the high school and the shared core facilities. The new high school will open in September of two thousand and fourteen, and the middle school will relocate to the existing high school. Then, from June two thousand and fourteen to August two thousand and fifteen, the middle school will be renovated. In September of two thousand and fifteen, the plan is for the middle school to open. From June two thousand and fifteen until two thousand and fifteen September, we'll demolish the existing high school, and then August two thousand and fifteen to December two thousand and fifteen, we'll complete the fields, the parking lots, and the landscaping. At this time, I'm going to invite Principal John Bernard to come forward and speak to you about several slides, and following him will be Principal Catherine O'Connell of the middle school. John?
Thank you, Mrs. Delaney. Thank you all very much for the opportunity to speak very briefly with you about the proposed middle school, high school facility. I have the good fortune of presenting to you some pictures that you might have seen last year, last March, just about a year ago, that were very exciting for us, and it is my hope that the funding will be secured to preserve the vision of what the middle school and high school project would be for the children of this community. The slide that you see up on the screen right now is what the proposed library would be for both the middle school and the high school, and actually, the next two sides are going to speak to shared core facilities as well. But I think it's very exciting for us as principals to know that we could be educating children, and facilities as outstanding as what we hope these will be. I think you can see from the representation here that the combined space for the library media facility would go from about fifty-eight hundred and fifty square feet to just short of eighty-five hundred square feet. This is planned to be a very exciting and a very vibrant facility for students of the middle school and the high school. Another area of the facility that would be shared by both schools is the auditorium. I don't think it's any secret that both schools enjoy a very vibrant and robust theater program. The auditorium that we're in right now does not serve our students to the fullest capacity, and it's our hope that we would not only be able to accommodate more people into the auditorium for a capacity of somewhere around six hundred and fifty seats, but that we would be able to afford opportunities for our students to showcase their talents in a facility that is worthy of that. The gymnasium is another facility that both schools would share. Again, we have a very robust athletic program here at the high school. We continue to exceed over three hundred student athletes each of the three athletic seasons each year. Our students do well, our athletic program is vibrant. It would be very, very nice and very exciting for us to provide all of our students at the middle school and the high school with facilities that would allow them to take their skills and their talents to another level. Thank you.
Hello, Kathy O'Connell, principal of the middle school, and I'm going to speak very, very briefly, just to show you some of the pictures that we voted on as a community last year. In looking at the classroom sizes, we currently do not have enough classrooms to meet the population of our students, and the classrooms that we do have are not large enough, so the new project will get us more classrooms with state-of-the-art equipment and larger sizes for collaboration and breakout space. In addition, many of you know and remember from last year, our science laboratories are inadequate. There are currently two laboratories in the high school. It's not enough. The new project will get us six. The middle school has a significantly inadequate amount of science labs. The new project will obviously bring more science equipment and opportunities for students to engage in the kinds of experiments that they should be doing every day. I want to just relay a very quick story to you. I was in a science classroom last week doing an observation, and in the middle of the observation, two students came in from another science classroom to fill up a large pail of water so that they could do the experiment that they needed to do in their classroom, and it was very disruptive. They were polite and kind, but it was still disruptive. Our students, as we all support them, deserve state-of-the-art science laboratories to become future scientists. So, I'm now going to turn it over to Bob Messeri to talk to you about the tax impact. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. In March of two thousand and twelve, the town voted to expend a hundred and seven point seven million dollars to build this project. The breakdown of that cost was for construction eighty-six thousand five hundred thousand dollars, and the project soft cost, twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars. At the time, it was estimated, and estimated is a big word, keep that in mind, the town share was fifty-eight to sixty million dollars, and the estimated share from Mass Building Authority was somewhere between forty-seven point nine, forty-nine point three million dollars, and that was based on fifty-one point nine percent reimbursement on eligible costs. The estimated cost to a homeowner was projected to be seven hundred dollars per year for those living in an average home, and the average assessment on a home in North Reading is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The estimated increase, if you want to calculate it back into what your host may be assessed for, is a hundred and fifty-five dollars per one hundred thousand dollars of evaluation. Questions were asked in a couple of the hearings we had recently about what was in soft cost. The soft cost estimate was twenty-two million two hundred thousand dollars. It was broken up as follows. The architect's fee is ten million point two, ten point two million. The OPM fee of the owner-project manager is two point four million. FFNE in technology, this is equipment that would be put into the school in the forms of technology, and also desks and chairs and tables, et cetera, was three point three million. The owner's contingency, this is to deal with unforeseen or change orders that might be made as the project went on, was four point three million. And miscellaneous, which includes the moving cost and other small items, too large a list to put on the slide here, totaled one million dollars. Next. The new project cost, and this is what we're proposing today, is being estimated, and this is a guaranteed construction cost called GPM. The new project cost total is one hundred and twenty-three point two million. The construction cost has gone up to one hundred and one million point four, one hundred and four point four million. Project soft cost, twenty-one point eight million. We've added about almost five hundred thousand dollars to the project soft cost under the owner contingency. So, the additional funds required, fifteen point five million, and the estimated additional cost for that average home valued at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a hundred and seventy-six dollars per year, and the estimated increase per one hundred thousand dollars is thirty-nine dollars. Project cost, construction cost, I'm sorry, project cost of one hundred and twenty-three point two million. The construction cost guaranteed maximum price, and by the way, last year, we didn't have a guaranteed maximum price, we had an estimated price. This is guaranteed, so we won't be asking for additional funds. Project soft cost is twenty-one point eight million. Again. Twenty-one point eight million. Estimated town share of that was seventy-three point five to seventy-five point five million, and again, that's dependent on how much we get from the state, which is estimated to be forty-seven point seven to forty-nine point three, same as what was proposed last year. The total estimated cost to a homeowner is eight hundred and seventy-six dollars per year, again, for the average home of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the estimated cost per one hundred thousand dollars, if you want to calculate it, is one ninety-four, one hundred and ninety-four dollars per one hundred thousand dollars on your tax bill. Thank you.
Good evening, once again. Now, I'd like to speak about project status and then actions that the secondary school building committee has taken to date, and items that we're considering to remove from this project, or have to be removed from this project, if the vote is done. You heard about guaranteed maximum price from Mr. Messeri. In the spring of last year, after the town meeting and after the town election, Gilbain and Company was hired as the construction manager at risk. They were brought on board at that time. Since then, contracts have been awarded for site, steel, and concrete. Any of you have been up to the site, you see that work is commenced, foundations have been poured, and in fact, I'm happy to report anyhow, steel was delivered today, and it was beginning to be erected. I was actually somewhat surprised how quickly it was being put in place. To date, we have paid out approximately nine million dollars. We've committed to paying forty million dollars. We have received to date three million dollars from MSBA in reimbursement. When, last summer, we first became aware that there was a problem with the estimate that our project manager, PMA, had presented to us, and my focus will be the eighty-six million five hundred thousand dollars, which they had told us would be the construction costs, was based on twenty percent design documents. Obviously, that was inaccurate, to say the least. At that time, the secondary school building committee entered what we consider round one, our early actions, to try to get the project budget in line with what this community had approved last March. At that time, we had removed five point six million dollars from the project. We did that by modifying some of the design elements, but we needed to stay away from any impact on the educational programming or square footage of the building. The key there is, if we touched the educational programming or the square footage, it was an immediate review by MSBA, and would trigger an immediate impact on our reimbursement, the forty-seven to forty-nine million dollars, which the state has said, if we keep this project ongoing, and we get the additional funds, we will still have a title to receive. Some things we had taken, just to highlight some of the things we had taken out of the project at that time. There was a mechanical tunnel that was removed from the project, there was a covered walkway that was removed from the project, there was a roof, all the overhangs were redesigned and reduced in size, just to highlight some of the items that the committee had taken a look at at that particular time. Then, from there, we got to the fall of last year, when, at that point, we had a serious problem. At that time, as the construction documents were more further along, we had a bigger problem in terms of getting us to the eighty-six million five hundred thousand dollar construction cost number. At that point, at the time it was round two, the committee considers those major cuts. We identified a possible five million dollar in additional cuts, but it's the feeling of the entire building committee that this would have a negative impact on the school community. Items in that category, just to highlight a few. The district office. District office is not just for our superintendent, it's a superintendent and her staff. Her staff, as well as holding meetings, and special education office, business manager of the schools, people come and visit, so you need parking and the like. That's an item that would have to be eliminated if the funding isn't approved, the additional funding is not approved this evening. That would be an impact on the school operating budget, as we would have to find space to lease for the superintendent and her staff on an annual basis. In addition there too, the tennis courts- what was proposed last year. Total estimated cost to a homeowner is $876 per year, again, for the average home of $450,000. And the estimated cost per $100,000, if you want to calculate it, is $194, $194 per $100,000 on your tax bill. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to speak about project status and then actions that the Secondary School Building Committee has taken to date, and items that we're considering to remove from this project, will have to be removed from this project if the vote is done. You heard about guaranteed maximum price from Mr. Messerri. In the spring of last year, after the town meeting and after the town election, Gilbain and Company was high as the construction manager at risk. They were brought on board at that time. Since then, contracts have been awarded for site, steel, and concrete. Any of you who have been up to the site, you see that work is commenced, foundations have been poured, and in fact, I'm happy to report anyhow, steel was delivered today and it was beginning to be erected. I was actually somewhat surprised how quickly it was being put in place. To date, we have paid out approximately $9 million. We've committed to paying $40 million. We have received to date $3 million from MSBA in reimbursement. When, last summer, we first became aware that there was a problem with the estimate that our project manager, PMA, had presented to us, my focus will be the $86,500,000, which they had told us would be the construction costs, was based on 20% design documents. Obviously, that was inaccurate, to say the least. At that time, the Secondary School Building Committee entered what we consider Round One, our early actions, to try to get the project's budget in line with what this community had approved last March. At that time, we had removed $5.6 million from the project. We did that by modifying some of the desired elements, but we needed to stay away from any impact on the educational programming or square footage of the building. The key there is, if we touched the educational programming or the square footage, it was an immediate review by MSBA and would trigger an immediate impact on our reimbursement, the $47 to $49 million, which the state has said, if we keep this project ongoing, we get the additional funds, we will still entitle to receive. Some things we had taken, just to highlight some of the things we had taken out of the project at that time. There was a mechanical tunnel that was removed from the project, there was a covered walkway that was removed from the project, there was a roof, all overhangs were redesigned and reduced in size, just to highlight some of the items that the committee had taken a look at at that particular time. Then from there, we got to the fall of last year, when, at that point, we had a serious problem. At that time, as the construction documents produced were more further along, we had a bigger problem in terms of getting us to the $86,500,000 construction cost number. At that point in time, it was Round Two, the committee considers those major cuts. We identified a possible $5 million in additional cuts, but it's the feeling of the entire building committee that this would have a negative impact on the school community. Items in that category, just to highlight a few. The district office, district office is not just for our superintendent, it's the superintendent and her staff, her staff as well as holding meetings, the special education office, business manager of the schools, people come and visit, so you need parking and the like. That's an item that would have to be eliminated if the funding isn't approved, the additional funding is not approved this evening. That would be an impact on the school operating budget, as we would have to find space to lease for the superintendent and her staff on an annual basis. In addition there too, the tennis courts, if there's a no vote that gets, that prevails this evening, the tennis courts are slated to be eliminated. In addition there too, the traffic light, that everyone feels is a necessity at the entranceway on Fox Street up to the school complex, is slated to be eliminated. Once again, what we have to do, in order to try to avoid an immediate review by the MSBA, is to stay away from square footage educational program. But as you can see, as we move along, it gets more and more difficult to do that. In my opinion, the tennis courts has a direct impact on the educational program, because we want to educate the entire child, both in the classroom and out of the classroom. We're not able to do that. From there, just in January, we found the problem had magnified to what you've been presented with this evening, the $15,500,000 deficit that we face. These items that are under consideration have a direct impact on the campus, a direct impact on the educational experience, and in fact, these items that are under consideration don't equal $15.5 million. The committee continues to work to see what other items you can take out of this project in order to get to that budget. Quite honestly, I don't think it's possible to do so. We did not build or propose to build a palace, we did not propose to build a Taj Mahal. We're down to bone marrow, folks, that's where we're at, which is devastating to this project. Things that are under consideration would be to replace the exterior of the high school and the middle school with concrete block. I don't think that's what we want, to look out on this hill and see. No seating in the auditorium, I don't know how you have any components in an auditorium without seating. The seats that you're sitting on aren't worth enough of money to even think about bringing up to the new site. The bleachers.
Mr. Moderator, you made a ruling that the meeting had denied the committee the opportunity for presentation, is that correct?
The meeting had denied the committee the opportunity for presentation. Mr. Delaney has, every speaker so far, with the exception of Mr. Delaney, has gone under the five-minute limit. Can I, I'd like to finish. Other members of the Secondary School Building Committee have yielded their minutes to Mr. Delaney. I would ask, I have a timer going, I would ask that we please not interrupt the speaker.
This, since the motion to allow them a presentation failed, this must be part of the discussion, is that correct?
No, each speaker.
Wait a minute, is this part of the discussion, the motion failed?
Under the town bylaws, a speaker can address the meeting for five minutes, as long as the subject matter is relevant to the motion.
Are we speaking on the article, is my question?
He is speaking on the article, yes.
Then this is part of the discussion, is it not?
I don't want to quibble, sure, it's part of the discussion.
Well then, as part of the discussion, I can move the question. Is there a second?
There has been no debate on the article, I will not entertain a move to the question.
This is the debate.
It's not a debate yet.
Then why are they having a discussion?
It's a presentation.
They were denied the presentation.
I would like order in the hall, please. I've heard the point of order, Mr. Delaney has the floor.
I'm challenging the moderator's ruling, the meeting will vote on whether the moderator is right or not.
Mr. O'Leary, on the point of order to the microphone, please.
General Rose, on the point of order, the point was ruled out of order, a motion to move to the question is out of order when someone else has the floor.
Exactly, and that's why I said I wouldn't entertain it.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McGrath.
We have, we would ask that people in the auditorium please step to the microphone so everyone can participate in this discussion and identify themselves, so we know who's speaking.
I'm sorry, the prior speaker was Mr. Burke.
Thank you.
Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, a no vote. No vote will result in $15 to $25 million cut from this project, or as I would like to say, a devaluing of this particular project. And it's $15 to $25 million, because this needs a little explanation. Although we're asking for $15.5 million, that's in order to build the project as presented to this community. However, all of the items but for two, the district office and the tennis courts, have a reimbursement component to it. So in addition to the cost of those items, if we delete those, we'll also reduce our reimbursement from the MSBA. What will happen if there's a no vote that prevails this evening is, the GMP that was provided to us by Gilbain, the town has 90 days to accept or reject that. Well, if there's a no vote, obviously, we have to reject that, we can't move forward with that GMP as presented earlier. That results in a redesign of the project, then is a rebidding process that takes place. That will result in a seven-month delay. Seven-month delay works this way. You heard about the phasing earlier. Well, that phasing is going to be modified. It will result in the high school not being completed until probably the Thanksgiving timeframe of this year. That will delay the movement of the middle school children into this building right here, which delays the remodeling of the middle school until December of this year or January of next. Because that remodeling is supposed to, as of now, take place in June of this year. That's a six-to-seven month delay. The delay cost alone are approximately $400,000 a month. That delay cost, you can do the math, is nearly $3 million. That's an additional cost associated with it. Just this morning, we had an opportunity, Superintendent Willis, Mr. Benetcia, we went into Representative Jones's office, met with him and Senator Tar, along with Jack McCarthy, the executive director of MSBA. We sat down with him, questions were asked. First question was asked of MSBA, is there additional funding for us here in North Reading? Jack McCarthy gave us honest answer, he said he had his people go through our project to look at those items that are identified as ineligible for any reimbursement. So far, they have not come across an item that would allow us to get any additional reimbursement. He is having his staff continue to look at that, but as of this evening, we cannot expect another dime from MSBA over and above the $47 to $49 million that they've already allocated for this particular project. In addition there too, we asked what impact, if we take out the items as presented in prior informational sessions in this evening, what impact does that have on our reimbursement? He said, you can tell your community that, no question about it, it will affect your reimbursement that you are slated to receive from the state. And in fact, when we brought up items such as seating in the auditorium, bleachers in the gymnasium, he raised his eyebrow and said, now, that's up to the MSBA. If you went down that road, would have to consider the impact on your educational programming. That would be an automatic review, they would have us in there the next day, based on our discussion with Mr. McCarthy earlier today. In addition to those things that will happen if the no vote prevails, as a result of the redesign, the rebidding process, well, I think everyone knows, out in the market, is market escalation. We've seen it, it's out there, construction is hot, the bids are actually coming in higher than anyone had expected, that will only continue. That's only going to exasperate the problem that we have. And as I said earlier, it's a direct impact on multiple, in multiple parts, in terms of the operating budget, but as I identified earlier, superintendent's space, as well as the tennis courts, have an immediate impact on that operating budget for years to come. A yes vote. Yes vote is the easier route to take, easier to explain. It preserves the approved building that this community overwhelmingly approved a year ago. It maintains that project schedule, it keeps all of the reimbursement, $47.7 million to $49.3 million. It is by far the most cost-effective option that we have. It eliminates the impact on any operating budget. The difficult part is the additional hit to the taxpayer, at $176 a year. I'm just going to conclude this way, if I can have just two more minutes. I'm probably as angry, if not more angry, than anyone else in this hall. I'm the one that stood up a year ago and said we wouldn't come back if the community supported this. We relied, the building committee relied, I relied, and sold it to you that we wouldn't be coming back. The estimate was bad, that's why we're here. But I'd ask you to take the emotion out of it and consider this. If you knew the number a year ago that you know today, or what the GMP is, and that's a guaranteed number, I ask you to ask yourselves, would you not still support the project? I know I would, because it's the right thing to do for this community. The community identified a need, we had a need of a new high school, we had a need for a new middle school. The community stepped up and supported that. We did it that time the most cost-effective way, it still remains the most cost-effective way. At the end of the day, if there's a no vote, we do a disservice to this community, we do a disservice to one another, is what you're going to hear in a moment from Mr. Messerri, it could potentially cost you more by voting no. Intuitively, that doesn't make sense, but I'm sure Mr. Messerri, in his own way, can explain that to you. I ask you to complete the mission here, satisfy the need, provide our children with a facility and teachers that can teach them in the 21st century, so they can compete on a global basis, not locally, not statewide, not countrywide, globally. That's what you endorsed a year ago, that's what I'm asking you to support again this evening. It pains me, it embarrasses me to get up here and ask for more, but I know that it's right, and it's most cost-effective. Thank you.
There has not been enough discussion or debate, I am not going to move to the question.
I appeal, I challenge the moderator's ruling.
Okay.
Seconds to the motion. Then you're obligated to vote on that, Mr. Moderator.
There has not been an opponent of the project speaking, therefore, there has been no debate.
We can have, we can move to the question at any time we choose.
And I don't have to accept the question.
Then you have to submit it to the meeting, you have to submit it to the meeting. I'm challenging your ruling.
I will not move to the question before the body for a bunch of reasons. One, I don't believe there's been sufficient debate, we have not heard from a detractor, and I have yet to accept recommendations from the boards and committees. You know what, somebody just shouted out, let the people speak, that's what I want to do, I want to let some people speak.
Let them speak with their vote, vote the question as to whether you want to close off.
I will not move to the question, please do not rise and move to the question again, Mr. Burke, or I may ask to have you removed from the building. May I have a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Messerri? The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends, Mr. Moderator, I would like to take a couple minutes to make a brief presentation on the financial impact as it relates to a no vote. Mr. Messerri, you have the floor, you have a five-minute limit. The slide behind me is aimed at providing a visual presentation of, visual image of what I'm going to present. A year ago, the town approved $107.7 million for this project, and I said earlier, to keep your eye on the word estimate. When it was presented, and I'm looking at the slide which would be to your left, $47.7 million was estimated to be the MSB share, that was the low end of the share, and the town share was estimated to be $60 million. The center bar shows what we're proposing this evening, and you note that we're asking for $15.5 million to be added to the town share for a total of $75.5 million. But, what's very important here is when the town meeting approved the $107.7 million in March of last year, they approved that expenditure. Where the money comes from is dependent on what's available. So the MSBA share at that time was $47.7 million, and the town share estimated to be $60 million. Now, you heard earlier in the presentation that the cuts that have to be made to get to $107.7 million budget require cuts that will lose MSBA funding, reimbursement. As those, as that reimbursement, a loss of reimbursement grows, and it could grow more than $15.5 million, the Board of Selectmen, on a no vote, will have to give serious consideration to allowing and borrowing additional money to cover the $107.7 million. So there's a crossover point, and the crossover point comes when we lose $15.5 million in MSBA funding. At that point, we're getting much less of a project, and yet, the taxpayer is spending the $75.5 million, because we had to make up the loss from the MSBA. Second scenario would be for the board to say, okay, we're not going to make up the difference. And now, I'm talking about the slide on the right. What this does, it reduces the total amount available for the project below $107.5 million. We don't know what that number is yet, because the building committee is working on what has to be removed from the project to meet $107.7 million. from the project to meet one hundred and seven point seven million dollar project. But you can be assured that with less than one hundred and seven point five million dollars, we don't have a project at all. And think about it. We borrowed to date fifty-five million with the plan of borrowing the remaining amount of money as we get downstream in the project. We've already spent nine million, and we have commitments out there for forty million, maybe more. If we shut down the project, we also have to pay the MSBA back what they've already reimbursed us for, which my understanding is at least three million dollars. So you can see very quickly, without a yes vote, we could go down the path if the Board of Selectmen were to choose not to do what we're entitled to do, and that is to raise the additional money to get us to one hundred and seven million dollars. We would have no project, and we would have spent the fifty-five million dollars that we borrowed. I don't think anybody here wants that. So I urge you, seriously urge you, to consider the fifteen point five million dollars on a yes vote is a better deal than a no vote. Thank you.
The Finance Committee wish to make a recommendation, Mrs. Schulman.
The Finance Committee unanimously supports this. The need that was identified over two years ago has not changed, and the alternative, as you have seen, of not passing this override will be more expressive to the town in terms of costs of delay, price escalation, inherent in a delayed bidding process, and the unknown but very real probability of reduced MSBA reimbursement because of the reduction in scope of the project. Thank you.
The School Committee wish to make a recommendation. Mr. Webster.
The School Committee unanimously recommends, just a quick comment. The alternative really isn't an alternative, there is no alternative. A no vote will be devastating to this town, be devastating to the students, and you'll end up paying more. So just think about that before you vote, thanks.
We have the recommendation discussions. Ma'am?
Hi, should I state my name?
Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Kathy Benz. I live at 10 Oscars Way, North Reading.
Could you, could you please speak up a little?
My name is Kathy, K-A-T-H-Y, Benz, B-E-N-Z. I, I'm a little nervous, speaking. I live at 10 Oscars Way. And I failed to educate myself about a lot of these details until lately being, but I had this question, and I mean it sincerely. It might not sound like I'm serious, but I'm very serious about the question. Can we have a window of time to try to pursue the money in a non-tax manner? In, basically donations from corporations. We have a local university with an endowment of billions. A professor we sent right to the Senate. And I was just wondering, instead of fighting each other, which is basically what's going on, if, if anybody in the room has any contacts to ask if we could get the money elsewhere? I mean, there's a lot of wealth in Massachusetts, and so instead of north threatening with some people clearly afraid of the burden, could we try to seek it in another way besides taxes? Could we just like, even if we have like two weeks from right now, you know what I mean? For people to go out, contact people, ask for donations? Is that a stupid question?
No, there are no stupid questions.
Mr. Delaney, to the question.
No stupid questions. This is my answer to that question. We have a ninety-day window to accept or reject the GMP. We had a scheduled this meeting this evening, an election at a certain time period in order to know whether or not we can accept or reject that GMP. But I can tell you this. The Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, the Finance Committee are looking at every avenue where we can get dollars to put towards this project that will reduce our borrowing. So, that can't be done in a two-week time period, but that's what will be investigated. And any monies we obtain in some way, shape, or form towards this project will reduce the hit on your personal real estate taxes.
Good. And who's, who's on that committee right now, and can I be part of it? In other words, I'm trying to say, I would love to be part of a group that's working aggressively and in any way possible to get funds to mitigate the tax burden. Like, you know, and is there a group actively, like, is Ms. Willis, the superintendent, like, is she working? Are people working?
Everyone is, and we'd be more than happy to have you on board to assist with that endeavor.
And I'm curious, what, what places have been pursued so far? Like, is there a list of places that have been, could we start that?
That's what's, that's the endeavor that we've been focused on trying to get this.
Right, I know, I know, I know.
That's been the focus. Whether it's a no vote or a yes vote, that's what the community, the leaders of the community are going to endeavor to do anyhow. So, welcome you, you can speak to me after. We exchange our contact information. Thank you.
Mr. McGrath, anyone seeking recognition in the gymnasium?
Yes, there is, Mr. Moderator.
Please have them state their name and address for the record.
My name is Dr. Richard Knapp, 25 Spruce Road, North Reading. I am a retired environmental engineer. I have four engineering degrees, two masters, a PhD. I have worked on numerous construction jobs, and this is the biggest mess that I ever seen in my long life. Let me just throw out a few factors, and I've lived here for twenty-four years. I'm originally from Connecticut. My brother and I have arguments of which town, his town in Connecticut, or North Reading is more incompetent. When I paid my taxes on February 2nd, with the 23% input, my brother was with me. We went into the town hall to pay the taxes. There was a police officer there. He looked at my brother and scoured him and says, "What are you looking at?" I turned to my brother and says, "Well, I guess you're not going to be buying a house in North Reading." I saw the bulletproof class there. Additional cost that's not covered. Let me go through some of the things that I've seen. The police department didn't get money from the state.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Can we stick to the motion on the floor, which is related to fifteen point five million?
We, you haven't shown the capability of spending the over a hundred million dollars to do a good job. I got sickened, being an environmental engineer, of going up on the hill on Tower Hill Road if seen that mounds of fifteen foot. I have worked on lawsuits of fugitive dust that go into neighborhoods with possible carcinogens and money being spent for the town. Do we have money for that? Questioned. Has an analysis been done, an air quality particulate monitoring program to define baseline here? If in the future, during the summertime when things dry up, have we done an air quality analysis for that to prevent us of being sued? Have we done an analysis of the dirt, wherever it's from? We have potentially lawsuits from there. Is there some contaminated materials? That's a question.
Okay. To address the question?
My question is, since I've lived here for twenty-four years.
Mr. Delaney will address the question.
Fine, I'd love to talk to Mr. Delaney who feels sick about things of, we're blowing the budget.
Mr. Delaney will address your question, thank you, sir.
There's been a hazardous materials report, and it's found nothing of that nature.
Have you done any air quality assessments? The pollutants of concern of particulate matter. The people who live there, I drove up there on Sunday. They were with feet from those piles. Come the summertime and things dry out with higher winds, I guarantee you, based on my long term from 1970 in the air pollution field, that we will violate the air quality standards. Mr. Delaney, want to comment on that?
Just, just state your, your name and who you work for, so they know.
Brad Door, Dornwoody Architects.
Repeat that, please.
Brad Door, Dornwoody Architects. There has been a hazardous materials survey that has been performed, okay, for the school site.
What does that mean?
What that means is, okay, in terms of the building, we've gone through and had a hazardous material consultant do a survey of all of the existing materials.
Things in the, in the buildings. When you did the excavation, what was down there? Did you do analysis of the particle size, the possible contaminants, yes or no?
You need to let him answer your question, sir.
Go on, I'm here all day.
No, oh, no.
I understand.
With respect to the soils, okay, on the existing site, those soils are monitored, okay, and tested to go and make a determination whether, in terms of the soil quality itself, for structural reasons, or soil for hazardous materials, those are all inspected. That's part of the town's testing budget. Those are reported to the project manager. They're reported back in terms, if there's any violations, to the Building Department. And thus far, we have not encountered, okay, any hazardous materials as they relate to the soils.
Final comment. In regards to the finance of this program on the things on it, this is not an environmental question. Increase with another two and a half type of things of increase on there is going to raise the base level of taxes for everybody. That's going to be the base level for the future taxes on their people. So we've upped the level of being higher. So for now to the next twenty years, we're going to be paying more and more and more. We need to shut it down. We've heard in newspapers what the selectmen feel about senior citizens. Comments that if they can't afford it, maybe they should move out. I know there are people out there hurting.
All right. Let's stick to the question. Mr. Delaney, to his question about, is it just more and more every year?
I'm going to respond to his last comment. No selectman has ever said they can't afford it, move out. That has never come from one of these. We know there are people out there that cannot afford it. We must move on, correct? This is exempt. Correct? I guess I didn't hear you.
The comment was, we know there are people out here that cannot afford this extension of this project. We need to, but we need to move on. Translate.
Not what you had just commented about. You changed your comment slightly. But I can tell you that, and I think Mr. Frisco can address this more than I can, but he is one member of the Board of Selectmen who's taken an action to try to assist those that are struggling in terms of meeting their tax obligations. And I know he has some sort of presentation, but I think you can wait on that. However, he's reactivated a taxation aid committee. And those of us that can afford to do so can contribute. And in fact, the most recent tax bill had an insert as to where you can contribute to assist those of us in our community that are struggling. In terms of what your point was, in terms of this borrowing, this borrowing is level payment for twenty-five years. So I think that addresses your last, your first comment, your last soliloquy.
The bottom line is the assessment values for the taxes are going to keep on going up, correct?
But, no. Mr. Klein is going to address your question, then we're going to bring it back to the main hall.
Darren Klein from Coleman and Page Town Council to the moderator. Addressing the gentleman's question. On a dead, on the motion before you tonight, the borrowing would be subject to a debt exclusion ballot vote, obviously, as all of you know. Under a debt exclusion, the amount of the exclusion may be raised in addition to the community's levy limit. It does not increase the community's levy limit, nor does it become part of the base for calculating future tax years levy limits. So it will not become part of your levy limit, it will not become a permanent part of your levy limit as well.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Moderator, William Smith, to Walston Road, North Reading. That question that just came up led me to what I was going to start with. I was on the Board of Selectmen back in the nineties. And I can tell you, for the last twenty, twenty-three, twenty-five years, what's been going on is, the operational budget has moved from a thirty-six million dollar budget in 2002 to a fifty-six million dollar budget in 2013. And the reason for that is because the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee have continually taxed to the maximum allowable under Proposition Two and a Half. Not only have they raised the rate by two and a half percent of the levy limit, which, by the way, is set by the Department of Revenue, not the Board of Selectmen or the Finance Committee, but at every town meeting, when we decide, which is coming up in June, the operational budget, they've been recommended that the two and a half percent factor be applied, which is increasing your tax rate, or your tax bill by a percentage. Certainly, your pay hasn't gone up at that same scale. So that increase of twenty million dollars was not only attributed to the two and a half percent that's allowed under Proposition Two and a Half, but they've been taking new growth revenues and adding it to the levy limit. So that, that compounds by a larger and larger number, so that the two and a half percent of a number, like I said, back in 2002 was thirty-six million. Two and a half percent of the thirty-six million is only about between four and five, six hundred thousand dollars of an increase in the operational budget. Now you're taking two and a half percent of a fifty-six million dollar budget. So the two and a half percent becomes a million point two instead of a four hundred thousand dollar increase. This is why we're all inundated with a high tax bill, and I'm sure that's why we're all here tonight, is because everything's based on what our tax bill looks at the end of the year. We're coming back with another town meeting in June. We've already seen the school department with a budget of an increase of one point two million dollars, where you recommended. Where that goes with the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, I don't know. But I do know that I was part of the problem in the nineties. And I brought to the town administrator, not this particular man because he wasn't here, the, I brought it to before my Board of Selectmen, I served on it with Steve O'Leary. I argued about taking new growth revenues and continually adding it in because we were adding roughly five hundred thousand dollars for twenty years. That's a ten million dollar increase in the operational budget. That's why we're one of the highest-paying taxpayers in the Middlesex County. Because we've allowed the tax to the max by the community, so we're all part of this. This town meeting, myself, boards, Finance Committee, we all agreed to do this because if we didn't go to the town meeting and object to it, that's what the rate was doing. So it's created a great big debt, a great big expense account called the operational budget. We're all shareholders of a big corporation, in my opinion. And if we don't get a hold of our expenditures, just like the federal government, we're going to be buying ourselves or spending ourselves right into debt. And if the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee are really serious about getting controls, they're not going to continue to tax to the max every single year. You can't sustain that type of growth. And my recommendation is to not tax all the way. At least eliminate the new growth revenues.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith, I, I'd ask, I'd ask you to just stay on point.
Half of you. Okay. If they would eliminate new growth revenues from being added to the operational budget at every town meeting and use new growth revenues for one-time items instead of an ongoing expense, because they've added ten million dollars in ongoing expenses, and they only have now three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand in new growth revenues to pay for a ten million dollar expense, the only place they can get the money is to go back to the taxpayers and hit you with a higher bill. That's my comment.
Mr. McGrath, anyone seeking recognition in the gymnasium?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, good evening. My name is Janine Largent, Hillside Road. I don't have a question, actually, just a comment. And first of all, can I just say how incredibly frustrating it is to be sitting in here with being in this position? If all the emphasis you put on the word estimate were given with such great emphasis when you were promoting this project a year ago, I'm not certain that as many people who voted for it would have, and I don't think we'd be in the position we are right now. I have two middle-school-aged daughters, and I certainly understand the importance of a good education. But I also understand how important it is to have discretionary income so that I can provide enrichment specific to my children's needs. Since 2007, I have seen my tax rate go from ten dollars and eighty-nine cents per thousand to sixteen dollars and four cents per thousand. We live in a very small house, but that change has meant about fifteen hundred dollars a year increase in my tax bill. And now we're going to add another hundred and thirty, I don't know, on top of it. And I have to be honest with you. I feel right now that I was put in this position intentionally. I believe that we knew this was an estimate way back when, and I know the school- and I know the school lobby is very powerful. I agree with the gentlemen who presented earlier that we are not a town that's looking at anything other than education. And we throw away around the term investment very freely, investing in our children's education. And I think everyone here invests in their children's education. But I think for myself, this is going to have to be a no vote. And I think if we scrap the whole thing and start from scratch, that's fine with me. But I don't like the strong.
Sir?
Hi, my name is Adams Berry. I graduated from this high school last year.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the name?
Adams Berry.
The address?
Edelmont Lane. I think it's important, because we haven't heard from anybody under 30 yet, that we hear from somebody who actually went to the high school in the last five years. So I have two stories for you guys, just for like some clarification of what the school board talked about and the selectmen talked about in their presentation. The first story involves a science lab, and the second one involves a small cover. The first one happened in my anatomy class during junior year, and we had to dissect a cow heart. So if anybody knows like what the size of cow heart is, about this big. And so we had, I think, four tables in the room, and we had like, I don't know, 12 pairs of people dissecting cow hearts together. And of course, there weren't enough tables for us to dissect the cow hearts. So I had to take the pail with the cow heart and put it on a chair, and then get on my knees and dissect the cow heart. So I don't know, that doesn't sound educationally good. I don't know about you guys, I'm a big fan of tables. Second, I was the costume designer for the North Reading High School Masters for three years. And throughout those three years, I saw how much we struggled with the arts in the school. And Mrs. Kane, the director here at the North Reading High School Masters, worked tirelessly and very hard for us to give us the experience that other high schools were getting. But every year, we went to the North Reading High School, or North Reading, sorry, Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild Competition, where we would compete against different high schools at their theaters, show our production, and get judged. And the single most thing I realized when we did that was that, number one, our seats were really crappy. Number two, our lights were not up to snuff like everybody else's. And we just didn't have the amount of space that they had. And I think it's something that you need to think about in terms of the fact that these seats, I think the last time they were updated, Joseph Stalin was in power and people were wearing poodle skirts. So I think that you really need to think about what you're saying when you can cut that much funding from this, when people are doing labs on chairs, and the chairs in the auditorium haven't been updated since the USSR was a world power. So I just think you need to think about that, and thank you for your time.
Mr. McGrath, anyone in the gymnasium? Yes, Mr. Moderator?
My name is Bonnie Spicer, Swan Pond Road. To address the young man that just graduated, my husband graduated in 1980, and this was newly renovated when he was a freshman. So that'll tell you when they last updated some of the rather, in my opinion, dangerous facilities around here. Very quickly, I would like to look at this as, yes, that investment word. And that although some of us are really struggling, and it's not easy to pay the taxes, we're very lucky to live in a town where most of our houses are not underwater with the mortgages. We have held house values in this town much better than the rest of the country and even the rest of our state. I'd like to really point that the better the schools, obviously, the better the experience for our kids. And I know we all really value that more than anything else, all of us in this room, no matter which side of the debate you're on. I'd like to really show that the evidence of that has come with the dedication of our staff in the schools and of our town people. And if you look at the money and the time and the energy that went into the athletic fields, and then look at the positive experiences of kids not only in our town, but in towns around us. We get a lot of positive traffic with all of the soccer competitions and with all of the use of the fields. When you drive by any day, any time, there's a lot of positive energy coming off of those fields. You can't buy that. Thank you.
Sir?
My name is John Coolier, I live on Marblehead Street. I've lived in North Reading over 60 years. Fortunately, I can't turn the clock back. But I was the first class that graduated from the new high school, this building, in 1960 that went through four years. And I'd like to think I got a good education. I'd like to correct a couple of items of things that have been mentioned. First of all, the voters did not vote on an estimate. We voted on approximately $108 million to build a new junior, senior high school. I urge the voters to reject the addition of $15 million. Fifteen and a half, for the following reasons. First of all, everyone knows our tax rates are escalating rather rapidly. They won't go down. They'll only continue to go up. But no one in this room, or hall, has the slightest idea of what overrides will be necessary in the next five to 10 years. Because of that, there are things that will occur that require the town, perhaps even in the school system, to vote on overrides of items that will be necessary, both for town government, for police safety, as well as education. Things we don't know about today. Couple of items that came to my attention. Healthcare costs in North Reading are about, on average, 10%. School budget projection is up 4.7% for 2014 at this stage. And there's already been significant cuts. Teacher pay will have to go up. But we won't have any teachers of quality. We've been proposed that if we scale the project back, it'll actually cost us more money. I have yet to hear a sane argument with any specifics.
Please, into the microphone, there's a whole other room that can't hear you.
We've been proposed that if the project is scaled back to approximately $108 million, it would actually cost us more money because the state may cut their share of funding. But no one's talked to the state's school building committee to find out. What, hear me out. What could be eliminated, reduced, and scaled back that would not affect their funding ratio? Well, if you cut the building in half, they're going to cut their funding back. I'm not suggesting we cut the science labs, the math labs, the important items. But there are certainly items that can be reduced in this project. I know that as an engineer. I'll give you one. The superintendent's office space could be cut. Those could be.
Okay, please. We cannot shout out.
I'm telling you, I don't like to be proposed as a threat that the project is going to cost me more if it's scaled back. Of course, it would make no sense to scrap the thing. We've already got money sunk into the hole, but it made no sense to sink additional money into it when we don't know where we're going and we don't know how much it's going to cost to operate the school system. There are items that will be required that we have, we know we're going to have to have a police officer at every school in this town. That's coming. But there are things that we don't know that are coming in the education field yet. That's why I suggest the voters reject this plan and look at the project on a sane basis. And if the building committee needs help, they ought to seek it out from the proper people that can address cuts that have been made.
Okay. Just, Mr. Delaney, I'm going to address that point. Mr. Delaney earlier referenced a meeting that was held today with Mr. Delaney, Mr. Venezia, Representative Jones, and the MSBA. So that discussion has been had, and I see Mr. Jones standing in line. So when I get to him, I'm sure he'll address that question again. Mr. Delaney, for a moment.
I'll address your point about how it could cost more. The items that have been identified to be cut, possible cuts, all but two have a reimbursement factor. The two that do not are the superintendent's administrative space and the tennis courts. Those budgeted amounts for those two particular items are $1.6 million. Let's call it 1.5 for now, easy math. You have a $15,500,000 gap. So you take out the tennis courts, you take out the administrative space that don't have any reimbursement. We need to find $14 million in cuts. Everything else we cut has a reimbursement factor of about 50 cents on the dollar. So right there, you're talking about a total of $21 million we would have to remove from this project to get to the 86.5, before we even talk about the cost and the delay in the project to get to that point. As I said earlier, that's a cost of $400,000 a month. There'll be a minimum delay of seven months. It's about a $3 million cost factor just in delay. That takes that number from 15.5 to $24 million that we'd have to remove from the project to get to the 86.5 to continue moving.
He answered your question. What? Is it a question regarding, is it a question regarding his response? Can you speak to the microphone, please?
I didn't suggest that the school superintendent not have an office or a space for her staff by any means. What I suggested is we scale the project back to live within the means of what was voted and authorized. And I do believe we can find a way. If we eliminate the tennis courts, I don't think the students would really be affected by their GPA. However, there are other areas, I believe, with prudent review. Obviously, the estimates were wrong, so I don't know where the credibility lies. Let me explain.
Mr. Delaney? First of all, and I'll remind everyone, do not go to the microphone unless specifically designated to go to the microphone. That's one. Two, please, let's stop shouting out from the audience because we're drowning out people speaking. Mr. Delaney, is it regarding the comment?
Right. Superintendent needs to be somewhere. If we cut the space, we need to lease space far. It's 4,000 square foot, and she's cut that down considerably. She's down to 4,000 square foot, site that she needs for her and her staff, that we have to lease, as I said earlier, direct impact on her operating budget. In terms of scaling the project back, this committee, not to pat ourselves on the back, have worked tirelessly since last summer to try to get this in line with what this committee voted on a year ago. There's 22 members of the community, just not members of the Board of Selectmen or the School Committee. 22 members that have worked on this. This is where we're at. This is not a threat, this is reality.
Mr. McGrath, anyone in the gymnasium seeking recognition?
Not at this time.
Ms. Kalala?
Patricia Kirk, Kalala, 186 Haywood Street. First of all, I'd like to comment on Mr. Delaney, I believe it was your comments, about the cost of labor. And I have a quick question. Have the subcontract bids gone out yet? Or are we just still at steel and concrete?
Some bids have gone out. Jeff, can you address and answer that specifically? Please come up. Jeff Wettner?
Jeff, please state your name and where you work.
Jeff Wettner is the owner's project manager representative for PMA.
The documents, as they stand now, went out to bid on March 1st, and the filed sub-bids, which are required under Mass. Temporal Watch Act 149A, are due on March 28th.
March 28th?
Yes.
That's fine, that's a good answer. As far as those bids are concerned, and as far as the comments that have been made, that this project, if this is not approved, and one has to start over and go back to a different guaranteed project number, that the cost will increase. I happen to work in a credit union that is inside and solely for the use of IBW 103 in Doncaster. That union has been in a position where a lot of their hard-working electrical workers have been out of work for a year, a year and a half, and in some cases, as much as two years. What is happening now inside that union hall is that people are going back to work. They're coming back into the credit union, putting money into accounts that have been sitting stagnant for a very long time. They have been getting direct deposit slips to go to their employers, whoever that contractor may be, and they're really happy. The word on the street is that the sum close to maybe 1,000 electrical workers that are still out of work in IBW 103 will all be back to work by September, and then they will be hit by what is called travelers, where guys will be coming in from New York and Pennsylvania and Connecticut to work in Massachusetts. And anybody that drives down 93, take a look at the cranes that are going up, and the crane, just like the crane that went up on the hill behind us here. Every crane that goes up, the cost of that subcontract goes up, and the cost of your labor goes up. And so, very, very true. Second comment. As far as construction in North Reading, if you build those houses, they will come. And when they come, you have to pay for them. The town of North Reading has to pay for them. We are the town of North Reading. And when you build another house and more children come in, and we educate those children, we, the town of North Reading, pay for it. I am not made of money, far from it. I graduated from this high school. I've lived in this town all my life. I graduated from this high school in 1970. And yes, Mr. Sperry, these are the same chairs that we sat in then and that my brother sat in when he graduated from this high school in 1960. My daughter graduated in 2006 and just finished her master's degree. She got a very good education in North Reading, so did I. One thing that has not really been talked a lot about is the children, the kids, and the education. Do we need tennis courts? Yes, we do. Because what we need to do is to educate the whole child. This isn't just about any more of 1940, or 50, or 60, or even 19... This isn't just about any more of 1940, or 50, or 60, or even 1970. This is a global world, we need to educate these children. My daughter sat in advanced placement biology classes with 30 kids with only 24 stations in the classroom. That is not acceptable, and it should be not acceptable to the town of North Reading. I urge you to think about this and vote for it. Thank you.
Philip Dardino, 16 Ridgeway Road. You know, I, my kids are grown. My kids aren't in the high school anymore, they came through here, but they're not here now, okay? This is a town, and I know many of you, and this is a town where we've always been proud of ourselves, we've been proud of what we've done, we've been proud of our accomplishments. This is a wonderful town, okay? I am gonna be quick, and I'm gonna make the point that if you build this school and do not fund this 15 and a half million, you will be very disappointed in the results. Now, you know, I know everybody's angry, and I don't blame anybody for being angry. But if you check your, you check out your history, what you know, right? You know projects, and you know projects often come in over budget. You've been involved in them, you've built them in your own house, you've built them at work, you've seen projects, and you know they come in over budget. This project's over budget. I can tell you that these people have cut every unnecessary thing they can cut. There are no fields, there are no tennis courts. They're talking about putting dirt parking lots, not having hot dogs in the parking lot, okay? And, and all I say to you is that I don't blame anybody for being angry. I don't have any children in the school, it is, it makes you angry to have to pay this extra money. But I want you to understand, if you don't pay this extra money, you will be embarrassed with the results, you will be unhappy with the results, all right? And worse than that, you know what's worse than that? You've heard all about the cost and all that. What's worse than that is, is that a lot of the stuff that's gonna end up getting cut in order to make the 86 million, we'll have to pay for later, okay? Long-term, you can't have a school without seats in an auditorium. So that means, what, five years, 10 years, 15 years, you can have an open room, right? But sooner or later, the town's gonna vote to put in chairs, and we're gonna pay for that then. So, you know, this is really the way it is. And like I said, I know an awful lot of you, and boy, I'm telling you, this is a proud town. You get, this is, the people who've been here for 60 years, you people built this town, you did all of that, built this town. Now's not the time to, to, to walk away from it. Now's the time to keep the investment up. You'll be proud of what you get. If you don't do it, frankly, you'll be embarrassed. Thank you.
Bud Wesley, 16 Lindar Road. Mr. Darnido is correct. Everybody's here for one reason, really. You were told one thing, and we're here to ask, we're asked for more money. So everybody here is pissed off. If everybody would feel better by throwing some paper spitballs or something at the architect because he can't estimate, would that solve our problem? We'd all feel better, but it ain't gonna solve anything, is it? All right, so, I had a bunch of other thoughts, but let's get on with this. What everybody here wants is some kind of a compromise, really, because they don't like the situation, they feel like you're being held hostage. Well, how are we supposed to change the product now? They get the whole hill all torn apart, and they get forms all over the place. We're supposed to change forms that are already in the ground? Not gonna happen. And as a lot of people have said, you don't wanna buy a Mercedes with no seats and no wheels on it. Not gonna work, okay? So, we need a compromise. My compromise is this. There's people in this room that are gonna be moved out of this town in three years. One of the points that was made when we were sold on this idea of the new school, which we really do need, is if you're gonna sell your house later on, when your kids go up and they go away, are we gonna have a good school system in here? Are we gonna have something that's gonna be a gem in this town so that you can sell your house, because it's one of the selling points when you go to sell your house? Or are we gonna have a shell up there on the hill? What do you want? So, if you want to be able to sell your house, and you want to get out of here, and you wanna get the money for it, because all the new parents that move into this town, and almost 90% of the people here said the same thing, they have a good school system, they have a nice school. It's the first question that every mother asks when they go to buy a house, doesn't it? So those of you that say, okay, you know, they're holding this ransom here, they got the place already started, what are we supposed to do? Well, I'll give you a five-year window, how's that sound? You wanna get out of town, you don't wanna pay the tax, I'll give you a five-year window. I have, I wanna amend this proposal.
Procedural issue, you can't, you can't make the motion, if you're gonna make a motion, you can't make a motion after speaking. You should've made the motion first. Should've asked me. If you'd asked me, I'd have told you.
You're pissing in my cock flicks, John.
Now, where are you gonna hand the piece of paper to someone who hasn't already spoken?
I think, I think I got someone right behind me that's the most qualified person that I could hand it to. A guy that's never missed a vote in his life.
So here's the question, how fast can the state rep run?
We have a procedural question. It says my amendment would have, would involve the town assesses, because I would say, don't raise taxes for five years. But if you vote for this, you vote that you take this, you're gonna spend the extra money, and you're not gonna raise the taxes for five years, you're gonna work with what you got. That's my idea, that's my compromise.
Thank you. All right, Mr. McGrath.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, moderator, we have someone here. Okay.
Janine Largent, Hillside.
Can you please pick up, I can't hear.
Certainly. Janine Largent, Hillside Road. When I moved here in 2001, we moved here for the great schools, actually. We could've bought a much larger house in a different town, but we moved here to North Reading because it had such quality schools. And one of the terms that I found unique about North Reading, and really rather proud of it, was that it was an over-performing school system, meaning the cost per student that was spent, for some reason, we were turning out kids that were far above what we could've expected. I live in 1,000 square feet, there's four of us that live there. If I applied the principles that people are applying here to my home, you would tell me I can't produce quality individuals. But I think I am. I think I'm raising four wonderful citizens. But I have a serious concern of a tax rate that's gonna be pushing $17 per thousand. I have heard people say, this is no Taj Mahal, this is no Newton Wellesley North. In reality, you're correct, it is not. Because the tax rate in Newton is $4.50 per thousand less than it is right now in North Reading. And they are assessed at 80%, not 100%. So maybe before we kept coming back to the trough for more and more money, we need to look about addressing the issues of massive tax increases and decide whether we wanna follow the rest of the country with this progressive idea that the more money we spend, the better quality we're gonna turn out of human beings. My parents, neither of them graduated high school, but I can tell you that my mother and my father can read and write more literately than the young man who spoke earlier tonight, no offense to him, or even probably my own children.
Please, no personal attacks.
And I'm gonna tell you that money is not what's, they didn't have, they had 40 kids in a classroom. And education doesn't necessarily have to cost a million dollars, and we shouldn't be given no other opportunities. I'm sorry, I'm gonna wait until they quiet so I can finish my comment. I don't believe that quality education should endet somebody to a public system that leaves them no other alternative, because when that system fails to produce, you are financially yoked to it for the rest of your life. And I apologize for offending anyone, especially the young man, he really was cute and funny, and I apologize, but the, the idea that we don't have to focus on literacy, but math and technology, not even science, to me is ludicrous. And this kind of tax dollars doesn't allow me to give my children the education that I think they deserve.
Hi, I'm Angie Changio, and I live at 20 Shea Hill Drive, I've been a resident of the community for 47 years. I've had three children through this system, and I've got three grandchildren in the system right now. I wasn't crazy about this project from day one, and I'm not crazy about it now. But we need to focus, everybody. We got a big hole up on that hill, we got a foundation going in, and the best that we can presume right now, we're gonna make the best of this situation. No one's gonna turn this project around. It's all been well-motivated by well-intentioned parents to do the best for their kids, our kids in this community. I don't like to give $22,000 for the next 25 years if I live that long, because that's what they're asking of us. But we already have voted on the $107.7 billion. We got some costs. So the only thing I'm gonna ask is a couple of questions to find out if we can neutralize part of this $15.5 million. Now, I know you have a reserve in there, or at least I hope you do, on the order of 4%. Based on looking at the numbers, it looks like we got $5 million in the key, unallocated right now. Now, things may, came up, we may need to use it. So there's $5 million there. Now, there is some culpability, okay, in the estimates. You folks were embarrassed because you went ahead and got a override vote based on estimates, and everybody has admitted that we were very, very disappointed in the estimates. And I'm wondering if we are gonna have any recourse to try to recover from that. I know we're going down that path legally right now to find out if we can do so. And then the other issue I have is what kind of a contract do we have with Gilbain? What's his profit fee, and what's he gonna be making on material? And are there any opportunities when the bids come in for us to be a little bit more scrutinizing on what comes in to see if there are opportunities? So the only thing I'm asking for is that if we go forward with this project, we're gonna be a lot more intense in looking at the numbers to understand whether or not we can start to reduce this with that goal. Now, I know you're well on your way to do that, but I think we need to start talking about details. And when we put numbers out there, we ought to show the map that goes with it, and that's part of our issue. So, in summary, if we're gonna approve this project, that's all I'm asking for, is that we're gonna try to do better to neutralize the $15.5 million. And I'd like to see that commitment on everybody involved in this project to make that happen. And the people in this community sign up and go help these guys. There are a lot of folks in this, in this town that are very, very competent and probably can help in a lot of these issues for the remaining 80 million bucks that we're gonna spend. And the thing we need to understand, and everybody is so frustrated, is this, this project is really very unaffordable. We're gonna be spending $112 million on this project, when you include the cost of money for the next 25 years. That's why so, why so many people are frustrated. But going forward, we need to see more scrutiny of the numbers coming in and what we can do to neutralize the $15.5 million. If you agree to do that, then that's all we can ask for. But you cannot stop the project because we have too much in the sub-costs. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Representative Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, three of the members. Just to reiterate a few things that Mr. Delaney said, we had a meeting this morning, some of the towers there with MSBA. And I've had the opportunity to work with MSBA during the past 20 years in projects in all of the towns and communities I represent. And I would say that this is the most challenging and most difficult. And there's not a person here tonight, or in the gymnasium, who's happy that they're here tonight awaiting snowstorm, in dealing with this issue. We asked some pointed questions this morning. First, you know, jeez, could you just give us some more money? And I would like nothing better, believe me, than to come here tonight and say, oh, I have a check for you. But I will say, based on what I've tried to do the past 20 years representing you, is do my darndest to be sure that every dollar we can get from the state for this project, we will. And I would point no further than the school off to my right, through the walls, the basketball school, that when we say that, we mean it and we follow through. And we will do that going forward. That being said, MSBA is not at a point where they're gonna commit additional dollars. They did promise, they didn't commit to us, they would work with us and go through every single dollar, and anything that they could interpret as an allowable cost, they would, and we will hold them to that commitment. In addition, we asked the question about, well, if we don't approve this tonight, you've already seen the list, and it is making a point again, and maybe emphasizing a point again, but there are some items on that list for which we are probably right now expecting reimbursement, that if we don't go forward with, we obviously won't get reimbursement for. Therefore, the portion that we would be getting from the state will be lower. So even if you don't approve it, and we're still working on, call it a $108, $108 million figure, our piece is gonna go up. Doesn't change the bottom line, it does change which pocket it's coming out of. The state's pocket, and I realize, we are all part of the state, I get that, believe me, I get to talk taxes every day, more these days than I care to frankly. The next point is that if we make too many changes to this, we will be calling into question our commitment to the plan, the contract that we signed, about the educational facility and the educational mission, in which case, it may then have to go back before the MSBA board, in which case, they can say, you know, we're not gonna give you any more money. So I know it, it sounds like a scare tactic, and I apologize for that, because I don't like to do that. But sometimes, the truth is scary. And it is the truth. And I say that because I've gotten to work with both versions of MSBA, the old MSBA, the new MSBA, and they've always been straightforward, we've always worked hard to try to deliver the most money for the communities, and they've worked with us. On the basketball school, they could've walked away and done nothing. And the same is true in the town of Reading, which also represented their high school. So I would say that it's not meant to be a scare tactic. Some people talked about the future, future overrides, future needs of the town. Some could say, well, that's a scare tactic, vote no now so you have money later on for something that comes up. That's a decision. I respect and value people on both sides of this question. I've known many, many of you for years, I graduated in 1983, I am hopefully a successful product of the North Reading educational system, the little, the middle, and the high school. But I also know that in growing up in this town, people made sacrifices so that I could get a quality education. And I know that what we're asking tonight, and I'm shifting my state representative hat to my local property taxpayer hat, we're asking you to make that same commitment to the children and grandchildren and future generations that our forefathers made to us so that I could go on and get a good education, hopefully amount to something productive for the community. I know it's difficult, I know many people are hurting. I, and I know the senator, we get calls every day from people who are in need, who need a helping hand, and, you know, tonight maybe occasionally has generated a little more heat and light. But importantly, you know, you're involved in the process, you're involved in making decisions, and I think that, you know, I guess the final comment I would make is, after all the frustrations, and I've been up on Tower Hill and School Hill, and driven down, I know people have been frustrated by some of the things that have gone on, the commitments that have been made, I come back to sort of what I call the, the letter to the editor that you write and you put in your drawer and you think about. And I'm frustrated, and to quote Mr. Leslie, pissed off a little bit, that's a legislative term. And, but I also know when we step back from that, I honestly believe that this community, if they had tonight's number a year ago, would have embraced this project because they knew it was the right thing to do. And you know what? It's still the right thing to do, albeit a little bit more difficult. I appreciate that, and I'm very, very sensitive to that. And I would share the sentiment that maybe Mr. Smith and Bill and I talked outside, and his math is just as good or just as bad as it was when we were on the Board of Selectment twenty years ago. That the Board of Selectment, and the school committee, and the finance committee, and all of us, sharp on our pencils. Because in approving this
Okay.
Hi, I'm Gabrielle.
Could you speak up, please?
Sure, sorry. I'm Gabrielle Mures from Three Rebecca's Row. And I think we need a new school system because one of my classes is held in a closet, and it's kinda hard to think when you're in the closet.
Hi there. My name is Christine Pacora. I live at twenty-four Country Club Road. And first of all, I'm kinda nervous. I don't do this kind of stuff. But I felt it was kind of important to speak about two things. First of all, on a personal note, my husband is on the SSBC, and I am kind of offended at the letters in the paper and the comments made tonight that the people who sit here before you have somehow deceived you, tricked you. My husband works very hard at another job, and he comes home really late at night, sometimes doesn't see his children, because just like all the people sitting in front of you, their efforts are working to make this school building project as successful and the least expensive as possible. And so I think that the people who are in front of you today do deserve some accolades. My second point is more on a personal note. There have been some comments tonight about that suggesting that we should just leave the school building, forget, just leave the hole in the ground, and what we have in this high school and the middle school is acceptable for building circumstances. Some of you may know, my daughter, she has muscular dystrophy. She is currently at the middle school. She uses a wheelchair to get around school. I would guess that the majority of you don't have a child who has a wheelchair. She has been to this high school on a tour last, whenever they were having the tours to come check out the high school. There were classrooms that she couldn't even get into because there were so many desks in the classroom. She couldn't, the doorway wasn't wide enough for her to get into. The bathrooms at the middle school, they are not appropriately accessible for her to use. I know that comes as a shock, and it's shameful that that's what happens. But this building is not appropriate. This auditorium that we're sitting in right now, who's sitting in the accessible seats tonight? Nobody. Oh, there's one. Is that for a wheelchair right there? No, it's not, it's not accessible. The mountain that you have to climb from this wing all the way to the end, you try making that one with a wheelchair. I'm not asking anybody to agree to this project for my child. I never asked for that. I just want people to be aware that the buildings as they stand now aren't appropriate for just existing in the building for someone who has physical disabilities.
Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve O'Leary, Fifty Mead Road, member of the Board of Selectmen. Just to address a few points, again, Representative Jones said it very well, Mr. Dardino, a lot of people this evening, as far as what we're facing and why we're here, and everybody's anger and frustration in relation to why we're not in this meeting this evening. I too believe that if we had the right number last year, we wouldn't be sitting here tonight. But we are, and that's the frustrating part, that's where the anger comes from. And as you were assured this evening by Mr. Delaney, the Board of Selectmen is taking appropriate action to pull the responsible parties responsible. But that's gonna take months, maybe years, to get that sorted out. But just to address some of the comments. First of all, the Secondary School Building Committee, the school committee, the Board of Selectmen, we did not blow this budget. We didn't blow the budget. We had a bad number to begin with. The budget has not been blown. This project is on schedule, it's on target, and we had a bad number to begin with, and that's why we didn't ask for enough money to start with. The most important point, I think, that we can make this evening, for those of you that are inclined to vote against it, keep in mind, we have already appropriated and bonded fifty-five million dollars towards this project. We have committed over forty million dollars already to this project that we're committed to spend. The ratio as to how much we are gonna spend in relation to what we're gonna get for reimbursements, it's front-end loaded. We have to put our money up front first. We've already committed over eighty percent of our bonded indebtedness on this project. We've already committed that, over eighty percent. We've only received maybe three percent of what the state was gonna give back to us in the form of reimbursements. So as we move forward and cut back on this project, it ends up costing us more because we're cutting some of the heart out of the project that's reimbursable. It will cost us more. If we were to walk away from the project right now and say, forget it, you know, it's a boondoggle and let's stop, what you've seen in your tax bill is not gonna go away. It's gonna continue on for the next twenty-five years. We've already committed it, we've already spent it. So can we turn back? You know, at some point, you know, I'm a banking zebra, so I go into banks all the time, and at some point in time I tell the other bankers, you know, it's time to cut your losses and move on, charge it off. I'm sorry, I'm not ready to stand here as a member of your Board of Selectmen and as a taxpayer to charge off fifty-five million dollars and walk away. We have to move forward with this project. We've been put into a situation that we have to move forward in order to maintain what we're trying to accomplish up here on top of the hill. We can't make that project whole. We can't make that neighborhood whole. We can't have a whole project without this additional appropriation. And to do anything less is going to cost us more. And it's gonna cost us in relation to what the facility's gonna be, what it's gonna look like, and as Mr. Dardino specifically said, you're gonna be disappointed. We will have spent almost a hundred-and-ten million dollars and be disappointed. I don't like spending an additional fifteen million dollars. I don't like having to stand here and ask you to spend an extra fifteen and a half million dollars. But I can in good conscience tell you that it's the best fiscal decision not to. The best fiscal decision that's gonna provide us with the greatest opportunity for reimbursement, the highest level of reimbursement, is to spend the money. What's gonna get us the right project and what we needed and what we told you we were gonna get as far as the scope of the project, it's gonna cost you a hundred-and-twenty-two million dollars. What that split is going to be is gonna be determined by you. If we go ahead, the board's been authorized, it's been a hundred-and-seven-point-eight million dollars. What that split's gonna be is gonna be determined by the votes tonight. That's right. We have to move forward with the project. So I would urge you, keep in mind, your tax bill is not gonna go down. What you're going to get is less of a project for the same or more money. That's a bad deal. So we've made the investment, we've made the commitment as a community, we're faced with an untenable situation that's been thrust upon us, not just Secondary School Building Committee who spent hundreds and hundreds of hours, not the school committee, not the Board of Selectmen, not the finance committee. These people that were paying a lot of money, millions of dollars to, gave us a bad number. And now we have to fix it, and we have to move forward. So I would urge you to consider strongly, really, if we vote this down, what are we gonna end up with? It's not a good deal. Unfortunately, we have to appropriate the money, and I would urge you to do so.
Mr. McGrath.
No one has stepped forward in the chamber at this time. Mr. Frisco.
I just wanna expand on a little bit of what Mr. O'Leary just described to you of the situation. I wanna use the slide that's behind me. I just wanna make sure the folks in the gymnasium can see the slide.
If the camera's on the slide, they can see the slide on gymnasium.
So I think it's really important, you have to understand the position we're in and why we presented these slides in the order we did. The Secondary School Building Committee came up and gave you a presentation, and Mr. Maseri is one of the members that did present on their behalf. But he also came up as a Board of Selectmen member to present this slide. Because we want the public that's here tonight to understand the fact that as a Board of Selectmen, if we vote this money down, and what I've learned and what I understand now with this project, if we vote this money down, it's gonna leave us with a really ugly-looking site out there, because there's a good possibility we will not be able to do anything going forward. And what I wanna point out is, this one right here, this bar right here on the right side, Mr. O'Leary said, your taxes won't go down. But I'm here to tell you that if you vote this down, your taxes most likely will go up, because we have a responsibility to the town. We have the authority up to the one-hundred-and-seven-point-seven million dollars. If we lose that MSBA reimbursement, we're gonna make up that money, because we're not gonna leave that site the way it is if we end up having to walk away from this project, or we have to make some significant reductions to the project. But we're still gonna spend the money, so we do not leave that, because we cannot take the investment that we've just made and waste it. That is the responsibility of the board, not the Secondary School Building Committee. And I want everyone to know from the no-voters to really understand, this is not a threat, this isn't a scare tactic, just like Representative Jones said. This is the honest, God-truth. We as leaders cannot walk away and leave that site the way it is. We are too far down this road, okay? So I want everyone to understand that, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Mrs. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Marcy Bailey, Twenty-One Deline Drive. I know the hour's late, so I'll try to be brief. First, I'd like to thank all the folks at the front of the room, the SSBC, the school committee, the finance committee, and the Board of Selectmen. I've observed this process very closely for a year, and especially for the last several months. I see what anger they've gone through, the same anger that most everyone in the hall has gone through, and what angst and difficulty they've gone to to try to cut the project before coming back to the town as a last resort. They put together a presentation tonight so that everyone can understand a very complex issue, and for that, I thank them, the sleepless nights, the aggravation they all had, the families, and personal obligations that we all do, yet they're trying their best to give back to the town and to manage a very difficult and complex project. And town meeting is the purest form of democracy, and I hope that, you know, I'm glad now that after the meeting's calmed a little bit, that everyone's had some time to be heard and to be informed, and hopefully to make a good, informed decision at the end of the evening. When the finance committee, the school committee, and the Board of Selectmen give unanimous support for something, I must stand up and listen. I ask questions, I study the numbers, but I must listen, because I know there are a bunch of all their own minds, and they can be cantankerous, and they can debate, but when they all come to the same conclusion, there's likely a good reason for it. When I look at that chart up there, what it's telling me is that I can buy a car with doors or I can buy a car with no doors for the same price. I'm gonna pick the car with the doors. I don't wanna drive by the school and see a hundred-million-dollar project that we are not proud of. I don't want in the operating budget for the next ten years to be faced, do I purchase a seat in the auditorium, a seat that I could purchase for fifty cents now and fifty cents from the MSBA, but I have to buy it for a dollar? And do I buy that auditorium seat, or do I put our hard-earned tax money to a police cruiser or to something else that we need very much? So for now, instead of sending the fifty cents for my seat to another town, I'm gonna make a vote that brings it back here and shares it. I echo really Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Dardino, and especially Representative Jones, who I respect very much. I see that Senator Tar is here tonight, and I think maybe we could all gain by hearing a little perspective like him, if that's okay, Senator Tar, of what you hear and what you hear.
Marlon.
I apologize for not speaking up and back there, but I'd like to see who I'm talking to. I recognize certainly many of you, because I either coached your children or your grandchildren many years ago, or I served you hot dogs and hamburgers at the barbecues in the summer program, that I've been volunteering for about forty years. So I think I have a little bit of insight in the town, but I noticed for the past maybe fifteen years, we've had an awful lot of people run for selectmen, two every time, maybe one or two school committee people, a couple people for volunteers. I hear all the educated people tonight, that are the doctors, professors, architects or engineers, and I wish they had come to the last three meetings we had, the informational meetings we had in town. I think had they come, they would've been able to ask the questions, and all your questions are important. But it would've been important to get an answer and be able to debate where the people are, when there were only maybe forty people in the last meeting, fifty people in the meeting before, and maybe fifty in the meeting before that. You don't have to trust everybody on this committee or not. You don't have to trust everybody up here or not, and you're not there, trust me. But I've been around for an awful lot of years, and when Chuck Karrucci, who has the same house he owned forty years ago, the same car he owned forty years ago, and is the chairman of the school building committee and played on the field that Mr. Puglia played on, who was captain of his team fifty years ago, they played on the football field that had nothing else. We didn't play any other sports. In forty years, we have done an awful lot to this town to improve everybody's value. When my mother died back in two thousand and six, and she had come to live with me for two years, and I had to sell her house while she was still living with me, her house sold for three hundred thousand. When we were born in that house, the house was twenty-nine thousand she paid for. It's because of the hard work of, yes, all the eighty-year-olds, the sixty-year-olds, the forty-year-olds, and a lot of the thirty-year-olds up here did it. Please, tonight, don't come back that it's us against them. I didn't have children in the school system for forty years, and I paid for your kids' taxes than everybody else did. I'm not asking you to pay for a dime for my kids, but you need to know, when we go to school now and we have our children, we're paying four or five thousand dollars for things we got for nothing, to play sports, for uniforms, for pencils, for cleance, for stipends for some of the teachers. We're paying a heck of a lot more than we did before. It's all of us. I'm asking you, Mr. Maseri, he's been on the school committee, the finance committee, the selection probably, or the seventies, eighties, and nineties. We have to get to a point that you trust some of the people up here. If you just vote blinders, because we're all broke and angry, then you're gonna wind up with what they said. Don't wanna trust them? Ask Mr. Maseri. Ask Chuck Karrucci. Ask somebody if these numbers are correct. I can tell you, I've been volunteering for forty years and paying attention to the numbers. They're correct. Please take a deep breath before you vote tonight, and you have to trust somebody, because all of us, the five-hundred-sixty people tonight, have not been at every town meeting for the past twenty years. And if we were, when we built the school, the basement of the school, it would've cost eight years sooner, because we would've had a brand-new school at a third of the price. We would've got state reimbursement money, and a high school and middle school would've been built eight years ago. Where would we all have?
Mr. Fode.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Fode, Twenty-Five Valley Road, Board of Selectmen. Wow, Rita. Wow. Wow. Well said, but wow, you scared me. Last week, I attended a forum. I'm a member of the Chelsea's School Building Committee, and I attended a forum called The Story of a Building. It was at Beverly High School. And the purpose of the forum was to present Beverly's experience in building their new school. For those who don't know, in the mid-two thousands, Beverly was months away from losing accreditation because their facilities were in such poor condition. They, it was so bad that the MSBA actually wasn't even ready to start giving out funding, but... To play sports, for uniforms, for pencils, for cleance, for stipends for some of the teachers, we're paying a heck of a lot more than we did before. It's all of us. I'm asking you, Mr. Misery, who's been on the School Committee, the Finance Committee, the Selectmen probably, or seventies, eighties, and nineties, we have to get to a point that you trust some of the people up here. If you just vote blinders, because we're all bugged and angry, then you're going to wind up with what they said. Don't want to trust them? Ask Mr. Misery. Ask Chuck Karrucci. Ask somebody if these numbers are correct. I can tell you, I've been volunteering for forty years and paying attention to the numbers. They're correct. Please take a deep breath before you vote tonight, and you have to trust somebody, because all of us, the five hundred and six hundred people tonight, have not been at every town meeting for the past twenty years. And if we were, when we built the, the school, the badge of the school, it would have cost eight years sooner, because we would have had a brand-new school at a third price, we would have got state reimbursement money, and a high school and middle school would have been built, built eight years ago. Where will we all be?
Mr. Fode.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Fode, 25 Valley Road, Board of Selectmen. Wow, Rita. Wow. Wow. Well said, but wow, you scared me. Last week, I, I attended a forum. I'm a member of Chelsea's School Building Committee, and I attended a forum called "The Story of a Building." It was at Beverly High School. And the purpose of the forum was to present Beverly's experience in building their new school. For those who don't know, in the mid-two thousands, Beverly was months away from losing accreditation because their facilities were such poor condition. They, it was so bad that the MSBA actually wasn't even ready to start giving out funding, but the condition was so bad that they had to, they had to go along real, much sooner than they wanted to. In any event, one of the panel members was a gentleman by the name of Mike Collins. Mike's the Facilities Director for the High School, Coward High School. Coincidentally, Michael's grandfather was a principal of the Beverly High School in 1965, when they were building a new school. And Mike told a story where, when they were building that school, they ran out of funding, but they went on, they finished building it. And Mike tells a story how he heard from his grandfather for the next forty years what a mistake they made in continuing building that building with, with the funding that they didn't have, and how they paid for it for every day in the next forty years. And just, you know, the condition of, of the facilities and how the kids didn't want to go there, the principal talked about how with the new school, they're retaining more students, kids aren't going to private schools anymore. In fact, their, their faculty is staying, they're seeing a decreased exodus in faculty members, and in fact, they're, they're generating and bringing in higher-quality educators. At last week's forum, last Thursday, I was impressed by Matt Layton, he's a junior at the high school, who spoke about his, his experience in high school, and how he said that despite the great faculty that's here, how difficult it is to, to learn in this environment, and I just impressed him, and how, you know, how he got up here and spoke about it, and how it really hit home. And this is a kid who's not going to be here, just like the gentleman who spoke earlier, he's not going to be here in two years, but he's still fighting to, to see that it gets, it gets built. He just, he just wanted to express that the learning experience is as important to a student and the environment that they go to school in is as important as, as the teachers themselves. One of the questions that I have is, you know, if we build a substandard school, will we be giving our students a subst, a subst, a substandard learning environment? As much as you don't think it, it does make a difference. And the last thing I want to say is, I just want to quote Winston Churchill when he said, "We shape our buildings, and thereafter, our buildings shape us." Just remember that. Our kids have to go to school here, and if this is the environment you want your kids to go to school in, good luck to you, but, you know, you've got to make sure that we have a place for these kids to go to school, where not in closets, and we have to make sure that they can get around, despite their, you know, their capabilities, so. I just hope that you think about it, get past the anger, and, and realize that, you know, despite the mistakes that were made, this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Mr. McGrath.
We have someone to be recognized.
Go ahead.
Hi, Catherine Jones, 16 Anthony Road. I'd like to move to the question.
I will, at this time, entertain a move to the question. All, all those in favor of moving to the question in the main hall, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. McGrath, would you take a vote in the gymnasium?
All those in favor of moving to question, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous.
Unanimous in the main hall as well. Motion carried. We will now be voting on the motion. Earlier this evening, someone indicated that they wanted to do a paper ballot.
Is this the time to make the motion for the paper ballot?
It is.
Will I make such a motion? And I understand that if twenty-five people stand in agreement, we'll have a paper ballot. Is that correct?
If twenty-five people stand, we will have a paper ballot. Mr. Yule, are you standing for a paper ballot?
Do we make sure people are standing in the gymnasium if they're recognized, please?
Adne.
Do we make sure that if people are standing in the gymnasium for this motion, that it's recognized?
I will, after I count the main hall. So those standing... One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. I have twenty-seven. So we don't need to count the gymnasium, we will move to a paper ballot. I will ask the town clerk to instruct everyone on what process we will be following for the paper ballot.
Thank you, town meeting. I would just like to explain the process that we're going to use. We do have to move forward in a very orderly fashion. We have two rooms to count, and we have to have processes in place to make sure that there's no duplicate voting, and that everybody is able to vote who is a registered voter. So number one, of course, anybody who's wearing a black badge is a visitor and is not entitled to a paper ballot. Please always remain at your seats during this process. The paper ballot is, we haven't had one in quite a long time, so many of you may not know. It's a yes/no ballot. I hope that the gymnasium can see this, Mr. McGrath?
Yes, we can.
Okay. It is perforated, so that when you do receive your ballot, you want to make sure that you tear it in half, and we will have a ballot box and a discard box. So be sure that you do put the, your vote, yes or no, in the proper receptacle. So in the ballot box, the box that will be marked ballot, and I'm holding it up right now, you want to put your vote, how you want to vote on this motion. In the discard box, you can deposit the other half of the ballot. You don't have to, but that's where you can put it. At the time that we proceed, what we're going to do is, in the gymnasium, the voting will take place inside the gym. There will be a table set up with a ballot box and a discard box. In this auditorium, we will have to file out into the foyer, and we will set up the tables in the foyer. We will have to proceed section by section, so that it does get, stay orderly, and that we're not crowding the area. At the time that you exit, and I'll ask you to exit on my left here up these stairs to proceed back into the lobby, and then after you vote, you can filter back in through the main doors that you first arrived in. You will have to turn in your yellow badge to receive a ballot, and at the same time, you will receive a new white badge. And that's so that we know that you have already voted, and that, you know, with the confusion that could happen, nobody is getting two ballots. That will be the only time that you will change a ballot, so that, or your badge, so that once you re-enter, everybody who is a voter and who is seated will then be wearing a white badge instead of a yellow badge. If you are unable to exit your, you have physical disabilities and are unable to exit, just stay at your seats. When we have finished the process outside in the foyer, if you raise your hand, we will come to you with a ballot and a badge to exchange. As I said, each section will go first, we'll ask the front tables, the voters and the front tables for the boards and committees to vote first, and that way they can come back and be seated, and then we'll start with the section on my left, the middle, and then the far-right section. And in the gymnasium also, the voting will take place section by section on the bleachers section, so they will proceed orderly. The police officers in each of these rooms will be the ones that will handle the ballot boxes, and all of the ballots will come, the ones here from the auditorium and the ones from the gym will come to the front table on the stage, where the tellers from, that Mr. Murphy has appointed already, will come up front and count the paper ballots at that time. So, does everybody understand the process, and does anyone have questions? Mr. Simms?
Yes, I'm Julie Brown, and I'm 30 Southwood Road, and I do have one question, and I have to be honest, I came here with a definite no in mind. However, I have to say, I don't, after the disrespect that some people have shown, now I want to know, if I vote no, do the, still go to special election, or does it kill the whole thing right now?
The, the special election will still take place on Friday, no matter what the outcome of this vote.
So if you vote no on this vote, the town will still have the right to override what's decided here?
The, the vote of town meeting stands. The, the vote on Friday at the election will not have a bearing on the vote here tonight. If Mr. Klein, Darren Klein, would like to speak to that?
Darren, Darren Klein, through, through the moderator. Regardless of the, the outcome of tonight's vote, the special election will be on Friday. If the vote fails tonight, and the ballot question passes on Friday, there would, there would need to be, either there would not be another vote, and there would, there would not be the appropriation of the extra fifteen point five million dollars, or it would have to be passed at a subsequent town meeting for the appropriation of the additional fifteen point five million dollars.
I, I, I'm going to clarify.
Oh, 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 we need quiet in the hall so we, we can hear a question.
I, I just, now, so that a no vote tonight, it will still go to the election. Now, if the whole town, not just the, the group here, but the whole town votes, and it passes to give the fifteen point five million dollars, does that in fact mean that it will progress and that they will get the fifteen point five?
No, if I may, Mr. Klein, what, what would happen is, the Board of Selectmen could call another town meeting to make that appropriation. You must have both the ballot question and the appropriation of town meeting occur in order to proceed spending the fifteen five.
So a yes vote would give not just this group, this body, the decision, but it would give the voters the right to do the whole town, but a yes vote would give the town election the deciding vote?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Simms?
I have a similar question, so just for clarification, no matter what happens tonight, the special election is on for Friday.
Correct.
If on Friday, for example, the town decides to appropriate the extra fifteen million dollars at some future date...
I'm sorry, wrong, wrong word. They're not appropriating, they're approving an override. The appropriation is only done at a town meeting.
Correct. So if the voters approve on Friday, to spend the additional fifteen and a half million dollars and complete this project, it is certainly possible that another town meeting could be held, and that anybody who didn't come tonight could come back and decide, at a future town meeting, perhaps, to pass this article, then the money would be approved, and the complete project would take place.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Yule. Could I have quiet in the hall, please? Mr. Yule.
This will only take a second. Jeff Yule, 427 Park Street. I, I just want everyone to understand...
Please speak into the microphone, I can't hear you.
Oh, it's echoing right here. Can you hear me now? Can you?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just want everybody to understand, it, it's, it's a firm belief from my experience on the Board of Selectmen, that special town meetings are very inflammatory in many cases. People get very passionate and express their feelings in ways that are not necessarily particular. And I think it's very important, because people are intimidated by this, by special meetings, and that's why I believe that the ballot vote is very important. It empowers people, it gives them the confidence to vote the way they honestly believe, and not let go to the...
Okay. I just want Mr. Yule to show that point, too. That's already been put in place, since we're, we're going to the ballot. Are there questions on how the ballot process is going to work in the main hall? Is the gymnasium all set?
We're set in the gym.
Okay. Let's proceed. All right, we are now ready, so would those down in the front, please, proceed to my left, out the side door, when you go back into the hall, come down the, the main aisles. If you can keep the aisles clear, so that folks can get back into the hall. Is there anybody in the hall who has not voted? Okay. Okay, please, put your hand up, and we will bring the ballots to you. I've got one over here. Anyone else in the hall who has not voted?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. McGrath?
Just to let you know, we are still casting ballots in the gym.
Okay. If, if the three tellers could come up onto the stage, please. If the three tellers in the main hall could come up onto the stage. Is there anybody else remaining in the main hall who has not voted? If I could have quiet for a minute, could you raise your hand and shout out at the same time if you haven't voted? I want to make sure everybody has a chance to vote. All right, so everyone's been recognized in the main hall. Everyone's voted, it appears. Is the gymnasium seated? Mr. McGrath, you're still there?
Give us a minute, Mr. Moderator.
Okay.
We're addressing fanny fatigue.
Okay, I, I, first of all, I want to thank everyone in the main hall and the gymnasium for your patience, and for ma, for remaining orderly, and accomplishing the process. And I also want to thank the tellers... And I also want to thank the tellers who did all the counting. We had the tellers in the main hall count all the ballots, and all of you in the main hall, and I believe in the overflow, could see them counting. So the results. For the main hall, yes, three-three-six. No, ninety-four. For the gymnasium, yes, one-eighty-nine. No, twenty-six. So the motion carries by more than the required two-thirds, five-twenty-five. Mr. Delaney, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move to adjour in this meeting. Sign it out.
If I could, just remind everyone that the polls are open on Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And please turn in your badges.